Thank you. And good morning. We're gonna get started now. I understand that the state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and Legal Intelligencer prior to the meeting, and can also be found on P H L council dot com. I now note that the hour has come. The clerk will please call a roll to take attendance. Members that are in attendance will please indicate they are present or whatever they may so choose. So their image will be displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and Philadelphia residents. Good morning.
Morning.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues.
Morning.
Councilwoman McDonald?
Council President and colleagues and the Philadelphians.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gautier?
Good morning, everybody present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues, and good morning, Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman Green?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, City of Philadelphia.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I'm present.
Morning.
Councilman Heenan?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Morning.
Councilman Johnson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleague. Still screaming justice for Darius Winters, fifteen-year-old young man murdered in southwest Philadelphia, part of my district.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and Philadelphia. I'm present.
Morning.
Councilman O?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Morning.
Councilman O'Neil?
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Councilwoman Parker?
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Kennedy Sanchez? Councilman Scola? Councilwoman Thomas?
This is, I'm sorry, I'm unmuted. This is Councilmember Scola. Good morning, Council President and colleagues. Present.
Morning.
Councilman Thomas?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public.
Morning.
Council President Clark?
And good morning, everyone. We're gonna get started. Today, we're gonna have an invocation, a much-needed invocation. So to give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes the Bishop James Darrell Robinson of Yasha Ministries. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Johnson. I would ask all members and guests, please bow your head for the invocation. Bishop, please proceed.
Yes, greetings to the City Council persons and to the public. Let's pray. Eternal Father and God, we thank you for this opportunity to pray. We understand, God, that we're in such difficult times with Corona and with the murder rate in our city. And so, God, we're asking you for wisdom. Wisdom as the affairs of this city are handled by City Council and those elected officials, Lord God, that are doing things to make things better. I pray, God, that you might visit us, God, with your love, your joy, your peace. I pray, God, that you would give us an understanding on how to communicate the right ideas and the right solutions to fix problems that so desperately need to be fixed. I pray, God, that you would help us to walk and to work in peace and harmony, and every bit of confusion would be dispelled. Help us, there, Lord, to lower the degree of racism and prejudice that seems to haunt us in our city and other cities across the nation. We pray, God, that you might just be there for us. God, you said that we should ask you. You said if we lack wisdom, we should ask you. God, we're not leaning to our own understanding, but in all of our ways, you said we should acknowledge you. God, again, we thank you for this great opportunity to pray. And I pray, God, that all these wonderful things that we're trying to do, that you would help us to do them in the matchless and eternal name of Jesus. We thank you, Lord, and we praise you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Bishop. It's a much-needed invocation. I really appreciate you. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February eighteen, twenty twenty-one, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February eighteen.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February eighteen, twenty twenty-one. Stand and approve. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And our next order of business is requests for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Thank you. Chair, thanks to Councilwoman. Our next order of business is communications. And Chair asks Mr. Decker to please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication that he may have in his possession.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, the following proposed ordinance. An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation and the Commissioner of Procurement on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a multi-year concession agreement with German American Marketing Incorporated during Business's Christmas Village in Philadelphia for the operation and management of a seasonal Christmas village for the City of Philadelphia at Love Park and other potential city-owned areas, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privilege resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar for the next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment. I want to thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, would you please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by the members?
Councilwoman Parker offers, on behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution commemorating the life and legacy of William Cody Anderson, a legendary figure in talk radio, a pioneering leader in African-American-owned radio and media, and a positive voice in the Black community.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution launching the establishment and funding of the Philadelphia Anti-Violence Resource Network to provide a one-stop clearinghouse of information and guide Philadelphians directly affected by violence in their communities to available resources within the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers one bill and one resolution entitled an ordinance permitting Title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning to revise certain provisions of Chapter fourteen, six hundred, entitled use regulations by amending the retail, sales, use category, and use-specific standards.
Further committee?
And a resolution declaring March seventh through fourteen, two thousand twenty-one, during Women's History Month as Women in Construction Week in the City of Philadelphia and honoring women in non-traditional careers for their commitment to support, increase, and advance the participation of women in construction, manufacturing, and transit careers in the Philadelphia region.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gimm offers one resolution honoring and commending Jennifer R. Clark for her fifteen-year tenure as the Executive Director of the Public Interest Law Center and her strategic, pioneering, and transformative work to expand access to justice that has changed the lives of hundreds of thousands of people across Pennsylvania and the nation.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Johnson offers a resolution recognizing the Philadelphia Obituary Project for its work to provide dignity to homicide victims and solace to their families by remembering and honoring those victims' lives.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Green offers three resolutions. Entitled a resolution designating Monday, March one, two thousand twenty-one, as COVID- nineteen Remembrance Day in the City of Philadelphia. And a resolution recognizing and congratulating Renee Henderson on the occasion of her retirement from community service after more than two decades of faithful and dedicated service.
Thank you. Those two resolutions will be on next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Committees on Finance and on Gun Violence Prevention to hold joint hearings regarding the connection between poverty, gun violence, and systemic racism in Philadelphia.
That will be on this week's calendar.
Councilwoman Brooks offers one resolution calling on the federal government to enact a plan by the end of President Biden's first one hundred days in office to cancel all student loan debt and begin the transition to education as a public good.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman McDonald offers one resolution congratulating Councilmember Sherrell L. Parker on her historic appointment as Board Chair of the Delaware River Port Authority and honoring her work as a board member and trailblazing leader in Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Thomas and Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offer an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one from the General Fund, the Council, to the General Fund, the Managing Director.
Further committee?
Councilman Thomas also offers also a resolution honoring and congratulating the After-School Activities and Partnerships Chess Club for their bringing together over one hundred and fifty clubs and twenty-five hundred students across the city and being instrumental in Philadelphia being named Chess City of the Year by U.S. Chess.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Bass offers three resolutions. Entitled a resolution recognizing February two thousand twenty-one as American Heart Month and honoring the American Heart Association of Philadelphia for their work in providing health resources in Philadelphia, emphasizing the importance of heart health and encouraging a healthy lifestyle.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Lynette Medley and her daughter Nia McGlone for her menstrual hub, the spot period, and for the work they have done to provide menstrual products and ongoing support for those suffering from period poverty.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution recognizing the month of February as National African-American Read-In Month and honoring Dr. Ebony Elizabeth Thomas Humanizing Stories Project for its work to bring together diverse voices from the world of children's media, literature, and culture through digital advocacy, community projects, and classroom resources.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman O offers a resolution refuting the article Contracting for Sex in the Pacific War, which contradicts the historical consensus and evidence of the thousands of women forced into sexual slavery by the Japanese Imperial Army before and during World War Two, written by J. Mark Ramsair, Mitsubishi professor of Japanese legal studies at Harvard Law School.
Next week's calendar?
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions. Is Councilwoman?
I'm prepared, Mr. President. We can communicate.
Thank you. Thank you, Leader. Our next order of business will be the Report from Committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a report from the Committee on Appropriations.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Chair of our Committee on Appropriations, the Committee on Appropriations reports out three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, would you please read that report?
To the President, to members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Appropriations, to which is referred Bill Number two one zero zero seven seven entitled An Ordinance Authorizing Transfers and Appropriations for Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-one from the General Fund, the Council, to the General Fund, the Department of Planning and Development. And Bill Number two one zero one two zero entitled an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one from the General Fund, the Council, to the General Fund, certain all City Offices, Departments, Boards, and Commissions, and thereby implementing Council's new normal jobs initiative. And Bill Number two one zero one two one entitled an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one from the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for Other Grants, to the General Fund, the Managing Director. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. The Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, on behalf of Councilmember Sanchez, our Chair of the Committee on Appropriations, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers two one zero zero seven seven, two one zero one two zero, and two one zero one two one.
Thank you.
Jones?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number two one zero zero seven seven, two one zero one two oh, two one zero one twenty-one. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. The Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a report from the Committee on Law and Government.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Law and Government reports out two bills and one resolution with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Please read that report.
The Committee on Law and Government, to which is referred Bill Number two one zero zero seven three entitled An Ordinance Providing for the Submission to the Qualified Electors of the City of Philadelphia of an Amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter, providing for expansion of the Board of License and Inspection Review. And Bill Number two one zero zero eight zero entitled an ordinance permitting Section twenty-six ten of the Philadelphia Code entitled Statement of Financial Interests by revising the required conditions and information for filing. And Resolution Number two one zero zero eight five entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter, providing for expansion of the Board of License and Inspection Review and providing for the submission of the proposed amendment to the electors of Philadelphia. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills and resolution to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers two one zero zero seven three and two one zero zero eight zero. Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number two one zero zero seventy-three, two one zero zero eight oh. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Resolution Number twenty-one oh oh eight five will be placed on our final passage calendar for our next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a report from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services. Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning. I do apologize. I just got dropped on the call, so I'm just getting reconnected here. One moment.
No problem.
Mr. President.
No problem.
One of those mornings. Uh, hold on one second. Mr. President, I'm sorry. Did you recognize me?
Yeah, just recognized you, Councilwoman, for a report from the Committee.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Public Health and Human Services, to which is referred Bill Number two one zero zero eight two entitled an ordinance permitting Title seventeen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement by amending Chapter seventeen, fourteen hundred, entitled Non-Competitively-Bid Contracts Financial Assistance to provide procedures applicable to the awarding of contracts to non-city providers of vaccine doses for COVID- nineteen and related variants. Respectful reports, it is considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bill to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number two one zero zero eight two.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number two one zero zero eighty-two. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our Report from Committee, and our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from Committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers two one zero one four zero, two one zero one four one, two one zero one four two, two one zero one four four, two one zero one four five, two one zero one four six, two one zero one four seven, two one zero one four nine, two one zero one five zero, two one zero one five one, two one zero one five three, and two zero zero six one seven. All other resolutions and bills are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Before we proceed with consideration of the calendar, we will move forward with our public comment. We want to take a brief five-to-ten-minute recess to give our technology professional some time to connect the speakers that we have for today's meeting.
Thank you for calling Philadelphia City Council. A beeping noise will indicate when you are on the show with the host. In the meantime, enjoy this music.
Okay. Hello, Modesto, are you there?
Yes, Lonnie, I can hear you.
Okay, all right, great. We had a little issue, but we have most of the people in and ready to go. Let me double-check. Mr. Williams, you still here with us?
I'm still here.
Okay, great. All right, Modesto, we are ready. You can let Channel sixty-four know.
Okay, great. Thanks, Lonnie.
Thank you.
Council President and Councilmembers, we are now live.
Okay, we're gonna get started. Now that everyone is connected to the meeting, and before considering the resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider public comment. It will go as follows. Public comment must concern matters of the second reading Public comment must concern matters of the second reading and final passes calendars for possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call two one five, six eight six, three four oh six by three P M. the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, your phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support or against the legislation, and add you to the list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Depending on the circumstances, we will designate a time. Today, you will have two minutes, so we ask you to please, if you need to, adjust your testimony to reflect a two-minute limit. In order to be fair, all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. So, once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony, and when there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, you will be reminded of this. Once your allotted time has passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks. Shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. I also reserve the right, under the provisions of the public comments, to limit the number of speakers where repetitious comments are being made on the same matter, and to limit the scope of testimony to only the certain items on the agenda during the emergency, which could affect callbacks for a public comment at the meeting. And also, please be aware that the public meeting is being recorded, and because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So, by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I will now ask the chief clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
Tiffany Green, commenting on two one zero, one four two.
She is not on the line?
I am on the line, hello?
Good morning. Say your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Yes, Tiffany Green, I am discussing Bill two ten, one four two.
Go ahead.
Council President and Council, Point Breeze Community requesting your help to put on hold Bill two ten, one four two, and stop the sale of twenty city-owned properties listed to give to, to sell to a developer. Point Breeze Cross Street, there was no public meeting for this resolution bill that was fast-tracked and introduced on February eighteenth and announced up for final passage. Okay, this process will have a negative impact. Council President, you have been promoting neighborhood preservation initiative, and we're saying that we would like to have an opportunity to have low-wage home ownership, which has not been done in our community for people making under fifteen dollars an hour. These are essential workers, and we work at Shopright and Ross and everything, and these young ladies, single mothers with children, have stated they would like to have an opportunity for low home ownership. We have taken surveys in our community, and they have stated that workforce housing is not affordable. They don't even feel a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is affordable. We should be able to have thirty A M. I. home ownership below that, and we, as a community, would set up a committee and oversee these twenty properties. You are selling to a developer who just received nineteen properties last year for Gravesbury, and sold them from one hundred and eighty-five thousand to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Okay, that is not for, that is not affordable for low-wage working families. We want equal treatment. New residents are notified in advance of city-owned properties, and they are told they have an opportunity to have meetings, and they're able to dictate. They were just, the city just gave or approved six to seven, six to ten properties for a doggy park, but yet you will not allow Point Breeze Community to have opportunities. Councilman Johnson promised fifty properties for home ownership on this particular block. We are asking Councilman Johnson to uphold his promise from twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, and do not sell these properties for workforce and market-rate housing. It is not fair to ask you to stand with you in your common needs, in your common needs, and yet you don't have the same respect to do, to have an opinion in our community development process. Okay, we ask that City Council put a hole on this bill, and please give us a chance. I'm asking you to really give us a chance during COVID- nineteen.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Rashawn R. Williams, commenting on two one zero, one four four.
Peace and love, good morning, everybody. My name is Rashawn Williams. I'm commenting on Resolution number two one oh four, one four four. I want to start off by saying that if there is a level of apathy toward supporting this bill, then that means that there is a strong level of apathy to all of the consequences of not paying attention to the repair of a people that we have experienced in Philadelphia. We've already been quite aware, may well aware, of the amount of murders that have taken place, the education violence that takes place. Gentrification is a completely separate conversation, however, it's a part of the same discussion. There are a series of things that plague specifically the black community in Philadelphia and in the nation, but since I'm speaking directly to Philadelphians, the thing that I want to prioritize is the apathy. And so, like I said, if there is a level of apathy towards a study for reparations, then that means that we have no interest in solving the issues that plague our community directly here in the city of Philadelphia. I don't just urge us to consider this reparations resolution for us to study how proposals can be given across the nation. I urge us to do so because we have an education crisis, we have a health crisis, we have a violence crisis, we have a neurological cerebral development process in our people's ability to cognitively function, and we haven't addressed any of those things. So, I'm excited to hear what everyone's intentions are, and how they will share their opinions so that we can amass a collective consciousness for us to consider this reparations resolution. And I would ask us to remember that we are, and if we haven't, and if we are not, we were once the members of the community that need your advocacy. So, please do not forget that you are a member of the community that needs this advocacy so that this work can be done on behalf of our people, because you are those people too. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Brianna Moore, commenting on two one zero, one four four.
Good morning. I'm testifying today on behalf of the INCOBR, the National Coalition of Blacks for Reparations in America. We are in full support of Resolution two one zero-
Miss Moore, just state your name for the record, please.
Brianna Moore.
Thank you, go ahead.
May I continue?
Yes, please.
Yes, I'm testifying today on behalf of INCOBR, the National Coalition of Blacks for Reparations in America. We're in full support for Resolution two one zero, one four four, on Congress to pass H.R. forty, the Commission to Study and Develop Reparation Proposals for African-Americans. Philadelphia is the poorest big city in America, and we are a majority-black and brown city. We will benefit the most from the passing of H.R. forty. Black people live every day with the afterlife of slavery. We experience skewed life chances, limited access to health and education, premature deaths, incarceration, and poverty. Enslaved Africans, our ancestors and their descendants, have suffered crimes against humanity. We have suffered murder, extermination, enslavement, deportation, forcible transfer, imprisonment, torture, sexual violence, persecution, sterilization. All over the nation, academic, medical, and religious institutions, city councils, and state legislatures are exploring their historical connections with slavery and making efforts to address this history. It's time for the national government to do the same thing through the H.R. forty bill. INCOBR defines reparations as "a process of repairing, healing, and restoring a people injured because of their group identity and a violation of their fundamental human rights by government, corporations, institutions, and families." Those groups that have been injured have the right to obtain from the government, corporation, institution, or family responsible for the injuries which is needed to repair and heal themselves. In addition to being in demand for justice, it is a principle of international human rights law. We are asking for atonement for our black politics, which has never been atoned for. The passing of this bill is steps toward making an atonement to our ancestors we owe to them and their descendants. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Adama Adecola, commenting on two one zero, one four four.
Good morning.
She is not on the line.
The next speaker is Ari Meritazam, commenting on two one zero, one four four.
Thank you. I am Minister Ari Meritazam of the Invisible Church of our enslaved ancestors and the Northeast Representative of INCOBR, which is the acronym for the National Coalition of Blacks for Reparations in America. I am a member of INCOBR Philadelphia. I request an invitation to revise and extend my remarks because of restrictions on time. Thanks, Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, for the invitation to support your resolution calling on Congress to pass H.R. forty, the Commission to Study and Develop Reparation Proposals for African-Americans Act. The H.R. forty commission would target full repair in the context of our people from sixteen nineteen to present day, as supported by the voluminous millions and millions of written documents and now databases. H.R. forty stands in the center of the political crossroads, representing reparations for our wealth gap, for miseducation, for our health gap, our political prisoners, and our right of return, and, yes, a check as an element of the solution. Currently, there are a hundred and seventy-three co-sponsors of H.R. forty. Locally, the congressional officials in the Delaware Valley are Representative Brendan Ball, Second District, Representative Dwight Evans, Third District, Representative Madeline Dean, Fourth District, Representative Murray Gay Scanlon, Fifth District, Representative Lisa Blunt Rochester, Delaware at Large, Representative Donna Norcross, First District, Camden County, New Jersey. Please join them with the passing of this resolution. Our mothers' mothers' mothers, and our fathers' fathers' fathers. Thank you. This resolution remembers them and values them and gives new life to them through us, their descendants. As I close, today is an auspicious day. We invite you and every member of the Philadelphia City Council to register for our Reparations Awareness Day event at W W W. incobophilip, incobphl.org, to better understand the facts and circumstances of what happened to our ancestors and the generational injuries to us, their descendants. Again, the website is W W W. incobophilip.org for a Reparations Awareness Day event. Again, I thank Councilman Johnson and the Philadelphia City Council members for this resolution expressing your support for Congress to pass H.R. forty, the Commission to Study and Develop Reparation Proposals for African-Americans Act. And remember, and never forget, reparations is the crossroad solution to our human capital infrastructure in the context of a reparations accord for descendants of African slaves in the United States as a matter of public policy, and I thank you for the short time.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Nabilah Bay, commenting on two one zero, one four four.
Good morning. This is Nabilah Bay, speaking on two one zero, one four four. I call on the spirit of our great Queen Mother Moore, who presented a petition to the United Nations in nineteen fifty-seven and in nineteen fifty-nine for self-determination against genocide and for land and reparations. I notice that your bill asks for compensation and atonement, and compensation, of course, could never be repaid for the free labor and the torture of our ancestors. However, here are some examples of repair, such as returning lands that were stolen from people of African descent, granting landmass for people of African descent who choose to live among each other, although not, not being totally separated from the United States, but still interacting with the United States, but we need someplace where we can be among our own. Free education through the doctorate level and loan forgiveness for all college and after-high school training programs. Free name changes, free legal name changes, so that we can return to our own and practice self-determination. Targeted physical and mental health treatment for the healing of our people. And what is our people? One of the major tenants of INCOBR is to honor the subject called peoplehood. You know, all people, all human beings have the right to determine their own peoplehood. And to, so I'm just asking that, and I'm grateful for the resolution, and I'm asking that you give full support for H.R. forty and for all reparations bills. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Maria Ortiz, commenting on two one oh, one four two.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Maria Ortiz, I'm opposing Bill two one oh, one four two. I do not want the sale of these properties to be sold to high-end developers. We want low-wage homes for people earning seven dollars fifty cents to fifteen dollars, place of low wage, high, not high-end. We give a sense of home ownership and wealth where they can appreciate the value of a home in Philadelphia, besides working here too. We have over five thousand homeless people in Philadelphia, not because they are not working, it's because of the rent are so high and the wages are seven dollars and fifty cents to fifteen dollars. Family torn apart where the system has failed to help each other, where family cannot get help and support. Did you know we only have seven hundred beds in Philadelphia? If you have to be in line by a certain time, and if you're working, you do not have a place to sleep. There, this is where it gets tricky. No place. You're sleeping on Step Alley Park, maybe in a car if you have a family, and Bridges. There are true people who want homes, homes, and families do too. Landlords filing false claims, renter lives not up to date, and finally, eviction. I am a homeowner that lives, that lives here and been affected, so has many others, in a two-story row home. These new homes towers over our home, causing damage. I know, I know. Where's the, where's the hope for us? The ballot destroying people's home, why is this city ready to throw long-term residents away, those who can, those that choose to stay here? Long-term, long-term, you know, who's causing debt problems? We're good enough, we're good enough for votes, but not enough for a place to live, jobs, and supermarkets. If a new, if a new comes to buy a home, they should be paying their fair share, fair share taxes. You said the city needs money. Why are we priced, priced, priced out, long-term, long-time residents? Why are we getting less and in ten-year dating gets more? All I have seen is taxes hit the most high with utilities and other entities. We, the long-time residents, deserve better, not priced out of taxes to have the less than water. Did you know water went up sixty dollars more? You saw water bill on top of that. We voted for seventeen council people and a mayor. Only three councilperson care about long-time residents. Did you know C N has four years-
Ms. Ortiz.
-for senior housing, consumer basis, the land can be better served for senior housing and low-wage homes for people-
Ms. Ortiz.
Thank you for listening to the problems and the concerns of the people of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Pat White, commenting on two one zero, one four two.
Point Breeze is requesting twenty city-owned properties. We need our community to have low-income housing, yes.
Just state your name.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Pat White.
Thank you, go ahead.
All right, I'm sorry. Point Breeze is requesting twenty city-owned properties. We need our community to have low-income housing ownership. We want to be involved in making decisions, being a lot of to these developers. We have long-term ownership in neighborhoods and feel our voices are not being heard. Again, I oppose Bill two one oh, one four two. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Vivian Burbage, commenting on two one zero, one four two.
Yes, I'm here. My name is Vivian Burbage, and I am commenting on Bill two one zero, one four two. As a longtime and long-term homeowner in the area of South Philadelphia, I am a, under the constituency of Kenyatta Johnson, and I vehemently oppose the building of these twenty properties or giving over to developers. It will be a terrible impact on the citizenry of South Philadelphia. Plus, I strongly oppose because we were given no say-so in whether or not this bill is passed or not. While I hope it's put on hold or at least stopped, because this bill should be placed in the hands of the citizenry of South Philadelphia, primarily because we need peers of our own kind down here, and it should be reserved for low-wage to low-income home ownership. We have many people in this- it should be reserved for low-wage to low-income home ownership. We have many people in this area who are trying to buy a home, but if it's stated and slated for the property for millionaires or people in that income bracket, it will serve no purpose for us down here. While there are many reasons why I oppose it, that is my strongest one, and that is what I feel so very passionately about.
...
...of South Phila...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
Hello, can you hear me? I'm still talking.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
That's right. I just want to say that I vehemently oppose the building of these homes given over to developers. We need an equal share. We need an equal say-so in the building of these homes. Thank you. I relinquish the rest of my time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Mr. President, just a point of personal privilege. I'm going to ask everybody who is on the line, because I don't know if it's coming out on your end, Mr. President, but someone needs to mute their mic if they are not speaking. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. It did come through on my... Yes, I heard it. Mr. Decker, go ahead.
The next speaker is Annette Randolph, commenting on two one zero one four two.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Annette Randolph.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Annette Randolph, and my husband Dennis, whom has retired from the Army, we reside here at twenty-twelve Ellsworth Street, where I am the co-block captain. I have been and are permanent address for sixty-one years and have seen this neighborhood do a dramatic change. I am opposing this Bill twenty-one oh one four two. I am requesting, pleading for low-wage home ownership for low-wage working families like my daughter and son, whom works very hard and have children whom would love to have their own homes, bedrooms, backyards, basements, and a home that they can look to say they own a home from hard work. Please stop looking straight without realizing we have another generation that is here and is still coming, and they look to us as well as voting. I thank you, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Bye-bye.
The next speaker is Moses Cotton, commenting on two one zero two one zero two.
He is not on the line.
The next speaker is Jake Zajcik.
Good morning. My name is Jacob Zajcik, and I am the Community Advocacy Director with the American Heart Association, and I am speaking in support of the resolution recognizing February twenty-twenty-one as Heart Month and the continued work the American Heart Association has done to promote a healthy lifestyle and improve health outcomes in Philadelphia. First, I would like to thank Public Health Committee Chair Councilmember Cindy Bass and City Council for the introduction of this resolution. Heart disease continues to be the leading cause of death in Philadelphia, while depending on the zip code you reside in, there's a twenty-year life expectancy difference. The American Heart Association is committed to addressing health inequities. That is why by twenty-twenty-four, we have committed to raise and invest more than two-hundred-and-thirty million specifically to address the barriers to achieving equitable health for all. Locally, we recently announced the Bernard J. Tyson Impact Fund, which is an eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar investment in local organizations addressing the social influencers of health in North Philadelphia. The American Heart Association is proud of our continued partnership and collaboration with City Council, the Department of Public Health, the School District of Philadelphia, and the City of Philadelphia. Together, we have implemented innovative approaches to improve health equity, including removing sugary drinks from children's meals, adding additional restrictions to tobacco retail licenses, making it more difficult for youth to become addicted to nicotine products, C P R trainings to help create a generation of potential lifesavers, and programs that improve access to healthier foods. We all know that there continues to be work needed to be done, and we are committed to working together to achieve equitable health for all in Philadelphia. Once again, I would like to thank Councilwoman Bass for the introduction of this resolution, and we look forward to the continued partnership and collaboration with the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Nina Ahmad, commenting on two one zero one four four.
Good morning. State your name for the record.
She's coming. Just a second. She's on.
Hello?
Good morning. Just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Hello?
Hello? Can you hear us?
Hello?
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 Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Proceed with your testimony. Does she connect?
She was. He dropped off twice. I think she maybe had problems with her phone. I think she's trying to call right back in.
Okay.
If we can give her thirty more seconds?
Sure.
I believe you can hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Hello? Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. Good morning. I would like to...
Just state your name.
This is Dr. Nina... Yeah, this is Dr. Nina Ahmed, and I'm here representing the Philadelphia chapter of the National Organization for Women. I'd like to thank Honorable Council President Della Clark and City Council members for this opportunity to provide public comments in support of Resolution two one zero one four four, calling on Congress to pass the Commission to Study and Develop Reparation Proposals for African Americans Act. I thank Councilmember Kenyatta Johnson and all the co-sponsors for introducing this much-needed resolution. Now, National Organization for Women is the grassroots arm of the women's movement and is dedicated to multi-use issue and multi-strategy approach to women's rights and the largest organization of feminist grassroots activists in the United States. Now condemns the racism that inflicts a double burden of race and sex discrimination on women of color. Seeing human rights as indivisible, we are committed to identifying and fighting against those barriers to equality and justice that are imposed by racism. A necessary step to permanently dismantle systemic racism is to acknowledge the promise of forty acres and a mill that was never honored. Imagine how profoundly different the history of race relations in the United States would have been had this policy been implemented and enforced, and had the formerly enslaved actually had access to ownership of land of property, and if they had the chance to build a crew and pass on wealth. Today, the barriers of wealth building still exist as stated in H R forty. We also want to underscore a woman's right in this matter of reparations, because there have been some parts of slavery that black women bore alone. The lack of significant data pertaining to the practice of exploiting the sexual vulnerability and reproductive capacity of enslaved women have led to African-American women to yet acquire a coherent legal doctrine with which to address the modern manifestations of female slave sexual and reproductive abuse. We are requesting that analysis of the effects of female slave sexual and reproductive abuse be studied and incorporated into the modern slavery reparations movement in the United States. I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Let the record reflect, I believe, Councilwoman Cronona Sanchez is present now.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I was joining the mayor at a vaccine opening center, and you can imagine that is very important, given the discussions we've been having. But I'm going to be recording on the record.
Get those vaccines in arms. Absolutely. Thank you. Let the record reflect that. Okay, that concludes our public comment. We now want to consider the bills and resolutions that are in the second reading and follow past this calendar, and we're going to ask Mr. Decker to please read the title of Resolution number two one zero one four oh.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank. These conveying title of certain properties located in the fifth council manic district.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. That the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number two one zero one four one.
A resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphia native Stefan Fulton on becoming the junior featherweight world boxing champion.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, Philadelphia has a history of boxing. Whether you talk about fighters like Muhammad Ali or Joe Frazier, both have Philadelphia roots. It is renowned that if you fight a Philadelphia fighter, you in for a war. Well, I just wanted to recognize that that tradition continues out of the third district, actually, out of a district, a boxing group that represents cool boy Stefan, and he is now the champ, representing Philly in the tradition of Philly boxers. And for that, I move for a six-punch combination and approval of this resolution.
Second.
Okay. Everybody duck. It's been moved in property second. All in favor of the resolution? Say aye.
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 Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two one zero one forty-two.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of seventeen forty-six Annan Street, twenty-two thirty-one, twenty-two thirty-two, twenty-two thirty-five, twenty-two forty-nine, twenty-two fifty-two, twenty-three twenty-four Cross Street, twenty-two twenty-seven Vernon Street, twenty-two twenty-four, twenty-two fifty-six, twenty-three oh five, twenty-three oh nine Greenwood Street, twenty-two thirty Reed Street, twenty-three eighteen Tasker Street, twenty-two fourteen, twenty-two twenty, twenty-two twenty-one, twenty-two thirty-nine, twenty-two forty-one, twenty-two forty-three, and twenty-three fifteen Wilder Street, located in the second council manic district.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for motion on the resolution.
Council President, before I ask the motion on this resolution, I just want to give some background regarding my balanced approach in addressing the issue of affordable workforce housing in the area in which I grew up in all my life, which is Point Breeze, South Philadelphia. These parcels of lands is a part of the R F P for affordable workforce housing in the Point Breeze area. Sixteen parcels are for affordable housing slash workforce housing, and the other four are going for market rate. So it's a mixed-income package that we're working with the developer for to make sure that we have some level of balanced housing in the Point Breeze community. And also, the houses are sold at eighty percent AMI. And so it's a balanced approach, but also just for the record that I want to state for the listeners as well and my colleagues in terms of my background and making sure that we have affordable workforce housing and low-income housing in Point Breeze. We also are working with the Women's Evangelization Corporation, where we just did a proposal and R F P for thirty-three houses in Point Breeze, and these are super-low-income housing, rent starting at eight hundred dollars, maxing out at thirteen hundred dollars, thirteen hundred dollars, particularly to help individuals, primarily women, with children. That's with Nora Littash. And so we continue to look for affordable housing options in Point Breeze. And also, I remind individuals that I am the councilperson who passed a bill known as the Extension to Loop. That's the Long Time Owner Occupants Program for long-term residents to have a lifetime tax abatement, not ten years, if you live in a home in the Point Breeze community or any other community across the city of Philadelphia for more than ten years. And I actually, at one time, the bill stated that your taxes have to triple. We amended the bill now. It only have to increase either a half of percentage as it comes to your taxes increasing, and you can be eligible for that program if you live in your home for more than ten years for the lifetime. So that's a lifetime tax abatement. And so I do want to address this narrative regarding my approach of making sure that we have a level of affordable and mixed-income housing in the Point Breeze area. But this particular proposal has been worked very closely with the land bank, making sure that we have a balanced approach for affordable workforce housing in Point Breeze. And so with that being said, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. That the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two one zero one four four.
A resolution calling on Congress to pass the Commission to Study and Develop Reparation Proposals for African Americans Act.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All in favor of the resolution? Say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two one zero one forty-five.
A resolution honoring Michael Mash on the occasion of his past for a lifetime of dedicated service to the people of Philadelphia.
Chair again recognizes Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. That the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number two one zero one forty-six.
A resolution calling on the National Football League to discontinue the practice of race norming in their concussion compensation program.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor of the resolution? Say aye.
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 Those opposed.
Aye.
And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, two one zero one forty-seven.
A resolution honoring and congratulating Dr. Carl Doone on his receipt of the shared Dan David Prize for his work at the University of Pennsylvania, where he was a lead researcher in the development of the first personalized cellular therapy for cancer.
Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. That the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number two one zero one forty-nine.
A resolution honoring and congratulating the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one Philadelphia youth poet laureate Cindy Brown for her creativity, community work, and dedication to serving Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say congratulations to her and the entire Arts Accords Task Force for the great work that they've been doing. She is an amazing talent who's already making the city and Philadelphia proud and will be one of our staple young people moving forward. So I, with a great amount of joy, move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, two one zero one five oh.
A resolution recognizing the week of February fourteen, two thousand twenty-one, to February twenty, two thousand twenty-one, as the first Black Girl Freedom Week to celebrate and honor black girls and the unique challenges they face, as well as to invest in their safe, free, and successful futures.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a black girl, I am proud to move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. That the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two one zero one fifty-one.
A resolution honoring and congratulating Deborah Archer for her new position as the first black president of the American Civil Liberties Union.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, as a black girl, a black woman, I'm honored to move for the motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in second. That the resolution be adopted. All in favor say aye.
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 Uh, those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number Two One Zero One Fifty Three.
Resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphia artist, musician, and anti-violence activist Michael OG Law Tavon for his fifteen years of work and advocacy on behalf of returning citizens, victims of crime, and disadvantaged youth in Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the option of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of Bill Number Two Zero Zero Six One Seven?
An ordinance authorizing an initial ten-year conversion of the current term with up to two, five-year renewal terms for a lease agreement the city has entered into with the first T of Greater Philadelphia for operating, managing, and maintaining the John F. Byrne Golf Course.
This bill had been read on two different days. Question now is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gautier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jim?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing the Committees on Finance and on Gun Violence Prevention to hold joint hearings regarding the connection between poverty, gun violence, and systemic racism in Philadelphia introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Um, this is an issue that this body has been focusing on for some time. Um, Councilmember Kenyatta Johnson has been very focused on this issue for some time and Chair of the Special Committee on Gun Violence, uh, as well as Councilmember Curtis Jones, who's the Chair of our Public Safety Committee, as well as, you know, Councilmember Jamie Gautier, who recently joined, um, National Cities on a issue regarding this concern. And all members of council have been very focused on this issue. Uh, we know that we had a horrific statistic last year that we reached four hundred ninety-nine homicides, uh, the highest since, uh, nineteen ninety. Already this year, we're at a forty-two percent increase over last year's, uh, very horrific number. Um, and was actually someone that's been working on this issue, uh, for some time, Bilal Kwayun, who many of you know has been very active, um, in working, trying to address, uh, gun violence and violence in the city. But also, he would also worked for the city in the Commerce Department. And in conversations, we talked about the connection between, uh, homicides and gun violence in our city and also the lack of, um, African-American businesses and the growth of businesses and the connection of systemic racism between, um, that issue. And when you think about in the city of Philadelphia, um, only six percent of businesses with employees are owned by African-Americans in the city of Philadelphia. And during the height of the pandemic, um, that was a sixty-eight percent reduction in the number of active black business owners in our city compared to a forty-four percent reduction, uh, for white business owners. So this connection between the issues of gun violence and homicide and poverty and the lack of growth of businesses is something I think there's a, a need to have a birth examination. I'm gonna thank all of my colleagues, uh, for co-sponsoring this resolution, and I move for it, it's adoption.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our calendar for today. We will move to our speeches. And just like to say for the record, uh, prior to recognizing, uh, members regarding speeches, I will note for the record at the time that we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this purpose. With that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority, I believe, Councilmember Brooks?
Thank you, uh, Council President. Um, I would like to thank my colleagues, Councilmembers Jamie Gautier, um, Catherine Gilmore Richardson, Derek Green, Helen Kim, Sherrell Parker, and Isaiah Thomas for co-sponsoring the resolution that I introduced today, calling on the Biden Administration to cancel student debt and begin the transition to education as a public good. Our higher education system is at a breaking point. As even entry-level jobs require, one, if not multiple degrees, our community members are going into hundreds of thousands of dollars of debt to land jobs that provide little more than a minimum wage. And the data is clear, debt, debt cancellation is racial justice. I personally have struggled with student loan debt, and I have seen firsthand the impact it has on generational wealth. And I worry about my children also going into debt for their education. Black borrowers take out loans at a far higher rate than our white counterparts. And this widens the racial wealth gap, and it makes it exceedingly difficult for our communities of color to purchase homes and live stable, self-fulfilled lives. While the pandemic has laid bare the systemic inequities in our society, it has also helped us to expand our ideas of what is possible. And it has shown us a world without evictions, without utility shut-offs, and where people's basic needs like food and shelter are met. And it has shown us a world without student loan payments and compound interest rates. As we look towards Philadelphia's recovery, we need to be creative and bold with our solutions. As the poorest, biggest city in the country, we need people-centered policies that lift people out of poverty and ease their financial burden. Full debt consolation will help us close the racial wealth gap, stimulate the economy, and reduce unnecessary suffering at a time when our communities have already endured so much. And I wanted to thank the debt collective and their advocacy and leadership, especially Jalil Bishop, whose research on student debt and systemic racism in Philadelphia inspired this resolution. And I want to thank again Council President and thank you, Council colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you so much for always being focused on those in need. Um, speeches on behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to speak briefly regarding the introduction of Bill Number Two One Zero One Two One. As the Chair knows, and the other members of the committee know, I voted against this bill moving out of committee. I just want to explain my vote and make one simple request to the administration, and that is before next week's final vote, please show us the plan. The administration is asking us to hand over another big check for our city's responses to COVID, fifty million dollars. But on Monday, we really didn't receive a lot of details around how that money would be spent. And I know a lot of us have asked for more details on the city's vaccination operations. In fact, during last week's hearing, I know council members asked for additional data on the number of vaccines being distributed by location, zip code, and other information on who exactly were vaccinated. I think everything we're asking for is reasonable, including the plan I've requested. My concern at this point is simple. We lack a detailed plan, a plan that lays out goals and timelines, a plan that explains exactly what we're doing, when, and how we're doing it. And until we have those plans in place, I can't justify handing over another large check to the administration. On Monday, our committee led by Chairperson Kenona Sanchez had an open and very transparent conversation about this vote. And I really appreciated her willingness to consider my perspective on this. I know she's working to get us the information we need so we all can be comfortable with our vote next week. But I want to be clear, I can't vote for this without some knowledge or confidence in the administration's plan to spend this additional fifty million dollars. The Philly Special Coalition called for a plan that was big and bold enough to vaccinate our citizens quickly and restore equity through a vaccination system that is vaccinating white neighborhoods twice as fast as communities of color. One week ago, this body, we voted sixteen to one. We passed a resolution to put the Philly Special Plan in place to ramp up drive-through mass vaccination sites at Lincoln Financial Field, the Man Center, our largest black churches, and large outdoor parking lots in every section of the city. We were told as recently as a week ago that the Link and these other la- large outdoor venues did not make sense. And the quote is, the administration said using the Link as a site is not feasible at the moment because it's due to the shortages in vaccine supplies the city is being allocated. If and when the city begins to get substantially more doses of the vaccine, using Lincoln Financial Field as a vaccination site may be considered. This was one week ago. Yesterday, the administration changed their tune. These are the words used yesterday, just two days ago, at the weekly COVID nineteen meeting, and I quote, "We are more or less at the point now where the greatest limiting factor is not the number of doses we receive, but just our own capacity to administer them through all the different organizations that are administering them through the city." So I want to be clear, I want to get this straight. A week ago, we didn't need to ramp up capacity because we weren't getting enough doses. Now, one week later, we have run out of the capacity to move the doses we're currently getting. The same day, we were told we have run out of vaccine distribution capacity, Pfizer and Moderna announced that an additional two hundred and twenty million doses of vaccine will be available in March. Johnson and Johnson has already said that a hundred billion of its one-shot vaccinations will be distributed in June. To my fellow council members, if we're currently limited, not by the number of doses we get, but by our capacity to distribute them, this is why we need a plan today to increase capacity. In the coming week and before we vote, I'd like the administration to come to us with a detailed plan for how to be able to escalate the vaccination distribution through current channels and additional channels. I know I've been very outspoken about the use of Lincoln Financial Field and other large neighborhood locations, but it's only because I believe we have to think bigger and be bolder about our future level of distribution so we're ready to go on day one. The call for a plan is also a call for transparency. Last week, when we were informed of the FEMA Type One site coming to the Pennsylvania Convention Center, the commissioner said many of the details were still being worked out. But in a city with a black population of forty-four percent, currently receiving less than twenty percent of our vaccines, putting our only federal mega site within walking distance of a hundred ninety-five thousand center-city residents, sixty-seven percent of them who are white, presents its own unique challenges to ensure racial equity. So we need to see a real plan of action for how we're targeting the very people we need to get to the convention center in the next six weeks. We need a transit plan, a parking plan, a zip code targeting effort, and we need to see outreach plans that include trusted community partners. I voted early this week against moving fifty million of CARES dollars to the general fund was one more attempt to try to get the administration to give us a plan, a clear path forward to vaccinating a hundred thousand people per week when those doses reach this level, which could be next month, and it's still not too late. Philly Special Plan can be that plan. There was ten drive-through mega sites, one in each council manic district, including a FEMA Type One drive-through mega site at Link, the Lincoln Financial Field, capable of shooting over ten thousand doses per day at seventy thousand per week. All these sites linked to a web platform that registers and schedules all vaccine appointments by zip code, ensuring the racial equity. If not this plan, then show us one that can achieve levels of dosing and timetables that match the supply levels set by the vaccine companies and the bioadministration. I applaud our health partners, community leaders, faith leaders, universities, groups like the Black Doctors, Fighting COVID, and other nonprofits, all who have stepped up to confront the health crisis of our time. This is the health crisis of our generation. They don't understand, as we do, that the sooner we get people vaccinated, the sooner we can safely bring people back to work and students back to school. And the sooner we can bring back our way of life, the better it is for everyone in the city. But without a plan in place, it's unclear what we're holding the administration accountable for accomplishing these next few months. That is why, for the sake of the city, we have to continue to look at this critically and ensure every dime we spend is maximized. I don't think I'm being unreasonable in my request to the administration. And before we vote next week, I'm hopeful the administration will come through with an operational plan that we all feel comfortable with moving forward. I think it's important that we ask the questions we've all been asking, all of us. And it's imperative to the process that the administration answer them. But until then, without a plan, I am a no vote. My fellow council members, I've never been more passionate about anything other than this. This is a moment in time for all of us. We are facing the health crisis of our generation. We will all be judged as to what we did to ensure the citizens of this city receive the potential lifesaving vaccinations as fast and as equitably as possible. We must take this crisis as an opportunity, the opportunity to show our constituents that we met the moment with a boldness of plan and a thoughtfulness in execution. This is what they deserve and have a right to demand from all of us. Thank you for the time today, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Can you guys hear me good?
Yes, sir.
A little echo. Okay. Um, so first, Council President, I just want to, uh, let you know that, uh, we got some, uh, positive feedback about the, uh, Clark and Thomas Sports Show already. Uh, so thank you, Councilmember Green, for your recommendation. Apparently, the public heard it, and, um, we've already received some positive rave reviews. Uh, but I want to, um, actually start by echoing the sentiments of my colleague, Councilmember Dom. Um, in joining him, um, on the choir of saying, "We need a plan." I too was in the appropriations hearing this past week. And outside of, of that, um, appropriations hearing, I also had an opportunity to join Councilmembers Brooks and Jim, um, whose leadership I appreciate, to, to, to stand outside a little bit with some of the people who were at the twenty-four-hour vaccination site um, that the Black Doctors Consortium put together. And I got a chance to talk to some folks. And I think that, uh, personal narratives are important where you could talk to people, but I actually asked them to document their experience. So I want to take a moment, and I don't normally do this, uh, but I want to take a moment to talk about, uh, what somebody who I'm going to call Mr. B said, um, as it relates to, uh, standing in line, um, at the vaccination site. So Mr. B, and I'm not going to reiterate him because it's very, very long, uh, but Mr. B talked about the fact that, um, it was, uh, freezing cold out there, uh, freezing temperatures, right? But Mr. B talked about how he had on his gloves. He talked about how, uh, poorly, um, the city, uh, did not support the Black Doctors Consortium. He talked about parking citations, and I vividly remember in our hearing bringing up the PPA and issues with parking. He talked about people getting parking citations. Um, he talked about people being worried about parking. He talked about the difficulties to go to the bathroom. He talked about type of vending, uh, meals not available, uh, nothing in a, in a sense of hot food. Um, but at the end of the day, after all that, he closed out by saying he was thankful to get the vaccination. Um, he was so appreciative of the Black Doctors Consortium of them stepping up to, to the plate, but so disappointed in the city of Philadelphia as it relates to the lack of plan and the lack of planning, um, surrounding, uh, anticipating the fact that, uh, he said thousands of people is what it felt like to him being out there for six hours, um, in the freezing cold, um, with essentially no support at all. Uh, so when Councilmember Dom says that, uh, we need a plan, it's examples like, um, who I'm calling Mr. B, um, and several dozen other people who I had an opportunity, uh, to, to unfortunate opportunity to meet while they were standing outside for hours this past weekend. But then there's also- But then there's also, similar to the conversation that I had with members of District Council Thirty-Three, who this past week talked about the fact that they have absolute no plan, uh, no indication, no communication as it relates to when their employees will be vaccinated. And they've been frontline essential workers since the start of this pandemic, which is almost a year, um, which was almost a year ago. So I I think that when we're screaming and hollering this communication issue and this sense of urgency that's needed around the vaccination, you know, I'm gonna put on my Marvel superhero kid hat and say, "Listen, we have the cure," right? Like, this is the cure. People want access to the cure. People want to be relieved of that anxiety, and they want to put themselves in a position where they can have some level of norm after all the trauma a- a- and negative experiences that we've all faced uh, over the last year. So thank you, Councilmember Dom. I appreciate um, your leadership and your advocacy on this issue, as well as other members of council. And it's a huge problem. Um, I also want to take a moment to thank uh, my colleague and fellow fellow uh, millennial member of council, uh, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, uh, who I've been working with for months now um, as it relates to the work of the Disadvantaged Communities Task Force. Um, it's an honor to introduce the Illuminating the Arts Bill today, uh, which we announced uh, earlier this week. Um, I also appreciate all of my other colleagues who've been working in collaboration with the Arts and Culture Task Force to put us in a position to try to uh, create um, some level of of stimulus dollars, but more importantly, some level of hope as it relates to uh, this legislative body and our focus um, specifically with the Arts and Culture Community and other council members who've been doing this work long before I got here, like Councilmember Green, Councilmember Squilla, Councilmember Oh, um, and I probably missed one or two. I appreciate you, appreciate your work and your support with the task force. And of course, Council President, um, I appreciate you. I know I'm a little long with it, but I still got to keep going. I apologize. Um, we actually had a a very important hearing yesterday um, as it relates to hit-and-runs. And the hearing was it was rather lengthy, but also rather informative. And we were able to hear from experts and um, different uh, opinions as it relates to what we need to do around this issue. But I think most people who were in the hearing would agree that uh, the most heart-wrenching testimony was from the victims. Uh, the the victims and the families uh, who've lost loved ones to hit-and-runs in the city of Philadelphia. And I know for me, um, it was very emotional to hear from uh, Reverend Evans and her talk about uh, the tragic loss of her son. And what was even more discouraging was the lack of response from the city of Philadelphia and a lack of action. And I think Reverend Evans spoke for or for dozens of citizens across the city of Philadelphia who had been victims of what we know to be in more in two thousand and twenty uh, more deaths, more fatalities uh, through hit-and-runs than what we've seen in over a decade. So when we talk about uh, the different issues that we have across the city, one of the things that came out of the hearing was that we need capital investment in infrastructure. That was a direction that we need to go to. And as I left the hearing, it began to uh, really sink in me like, wow, need capital investment in a lot of things. So I think it was Councilmember Green who who in one of our hearings earlier this week said that he was calling on the administration to be innovative as it relates to how we approach this budget season. And I'm going to go ahead and echo his sentiments uh, today in council. I too am calling on the administration to be very innovative as it relates to us moving into budget season. We need capital investments in infrastructure. We need capital investments in our schools. Uh, clearly, that's a problem that we are facing as it relates to trying to get folks returning to schools. Uh, we have a huge gun violence problem in the city of Philadelphia. And I know me personally, I've been begging the administration to be innovative as it relates to how we invest into prevention-based initiatives. And when you look at that achievement gap that we're going to have as it relates to virtual learning and us being unprepared for that on top of the gun violence epidemic that we see in Philadelphia uh, right now, it's imperative that we see um, um, innovation as it relates to this budget cycle. And we see the administration uh, hopefully lead the way as it relates to putting dollars and resources into places and neighborhoods that can really put some holes in some of these problems that we're uh, complaining about. And unfortunately, if the administration doesn't lead the way, I I am very confident in this council body uh, working together uh, to to redistribute dollars in the city of Philadelphia to help uh, move those who are suffering the most. Council President, colleagues, thank you so much. I apologize for being long with it, but I do um, appreciate your patience.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, in the past, when any ethnic group was attacked, the people that took the greatest offense weren't from the particular ethnic group involved. So my Asian colleagues stepped up to the plate when Muslims uh, were uh, attacked. My uh, Christian uh, colleagues were stepped up to the plate when Jewish cemeteries were um, attacked. And what sent the best signal in my mind was that non-impacted ethnic groups stood shoulder to shoulder with their counterparts from other parts of the culture. Today, I rise um, because of the lack of understanding um, that some people have when they put on a menu that they want to have COVID-19 mac and cheese. Um, and giving a Asian flavoring to it. It's not funny. I'm putting you on notice. It's not funny. If you've ever been to the Holocaust Museum, if you've ever been to, lest we forget, in uh, the Eighth Councilmatic District, talking about slavery, people hid their racist intent behind humor. Ha ha, hee hee. As a member of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, we've noted that in the country, there have been oh, close to three thousand attacks on Asian-Americans since COVID-19. Once again, here's the memo. It's not funny. It's not acceptable. And I take offense just as hard as anyone from the Chinese or Asian community that if it's done to them, it is done to all of us. So whe- whether you don't get the memo about how insensitive something like that can be, take note. Take note today, and please let us kind of understand and view of these humorous attempts through the other person's lens. Because it's just not funny. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. And uh, I wanted to start actually first by uh, recognizing um, the the uh, Black Doctors Consortium. Awesome job, awesome job, awesome job with what they did with vaccinating over four thousand people uh, last weekend. But I agree, the question is, where is the city of Philadelphia? Where where is the administration? And this is not to attack or uh, you know, uh, beat anyone up, but we need to do better. Our constituents deserve it. They need it. This is something that is life-saving. And there's no reason, there's really no reason with a a city with a nearly five billion dollar budget that we haven't done better uh, by our bo- most vulnerable constituents. So I did want to um, say that for the record. I also wanted to take time to highlight the creativity and passion of our Philadelphians and Philadelphia-based organizations in tackling highly important issues within our city. And first, I wanted to recognize Cody Anderson, who passed away on Saturday. He was an iconic leader in black media for decades. He was the first general manager of W U R D, the only African-American-owned and operated talk radio station in Pennsylvania. He was the president and general manager of WDAS FM one oh five point three FM and the owner and general manager of WHAT thirteen forty AM. He was also a member of King and Baptist Church of Germantown uh, in my district. And Cody was well-known by his colleagues as a beloved host, mentor, and friend. He used radio not only for music and talk, but also to discuss black political power and black-owned and operated radio. Many people who entered radio broadcasting attribute the start of their career and the existence of black radio in Philadelphia to Cody, and so he will truly be missed. Uh, I I counted him as a mentor, as a friend, and uh, we're we're really going to miss him. I think the last time I spoke to him was a few weeks ago, Council President Clark, when I called into your radio show uh, with Cody and and you, and it was it was a great time. I'm glad that I called in that day. I'm glad I was able to have that experience. And um, that was um, unfortunately, our last conversation together. But uh, until we meet again, um, to my good friend Cody Anderson, he will be missed. Um, I also wanted to make mention that February is National African-American Read-In Month, and it's the nation's first and oldest event dedicated to diversity and literature. Dr. Ebony Elizabeth Thomas, Associate Press uh, Professor at the University of Pennsylvania Graduate School of Education, leads the Humanizing Stories Project, which is celebrating Black History Month and African-American Read-In Month by highlighting new and classic books from the African-American despora. Recommendations can be submitted to the @HealingFictions Twitter account. And again, that's @HealingFictions Twitter. In Philadelphia, I also want to make note that heart disease is a leading cause of death and takes lives at a higher rate here than any other big city in the country. This month is American Heart Month, and I want to recognize the American Heart Association, who has collaborated with many local Philadelphia organizations to provide free, healthy meals and produce health education resources, blood pressure screenings, bystander CPR education, and quality healthcare, which has improved many lives in our city. Uh, as someone who has uh, suffered with heart disease and uh, um, you know, has has a a history of it within our family as uh, a lot, I won't say most, but a lot of African-Americans uh, have this very, very frightening uh, concern and issue uh, within our families. Uh, it's not a joke. It's not to be played with. It needs um, you know, routine care. It needs uh, you know, medication in some cases. And so we thank the American Heart Association for all that they do, particularly in the African-American community, which has higher rates of death and uh, heart disease than in most other places. So we need to pay attention to that as well. And finally, I wanted to mention the um, uh, resolution we did earlier today on period poverty, which refers to the inadequate access to menstrual products, hygiene products, clean water, and waste management systems. Period poverty affects women around the globe, forcing them to resort to socks, stuffed animals, and other makeshift menstrual products. Philadelphians Lynette Medley and Nia McGlon face period poverty themselves, and this year, they have established the SPOT Period, which is believed to be the first menstrual hub in the nation. The SPOT Period provides free menstrual and hygiene products, educational resources and seminars, access to clean water and toiletries, a computer room, uh, a computer room, first-period kits, and a Breonna Taylor safe room to serve as a sanctuary for marginalized women. The SPOT Period located in Germantown will be open from ten AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, and twelve to eight Wednesday, and by appointment uh, on Saturday throughout the pandemic. And so uh, a- and and as a woman, um, you know, period poverty is something that uh, you know, may, I think, make men uncomfortable. But as a woman, I can tell you that every woman has been there, every woman. And even if you take away the poverty section of the word period, of the words period poverty, if you could imagine uh, being somewhere, anywhere, at work, uh, at a function, at an event, and uh, having a cycle begin without having the proper products, it for a woman, it is terrifying, and it happens routinely. This is not something that is uncommon. And so I really thank them for bringing attention to it, that we're finally able to have these conversations about it, and that uh, we continue to have conversations to make people aware that this is yet another thing that as women we have to deal with, that really, for the most part, I don't think that most people um, or most men probably have any inkling whatsoever um, that this is an issue. It's a huge issue. Um, and so for women, uh, I think that that having the SPOT Period is just going to be a great thing for our city and hopefully as a model throughout our country. So I want to thank you, Cody Anderson. I want to thank Dr. Thomas. I want to thank the American Heart Association of Philadelphia. I want to thank Lynette and Nia for your service to your community and making a difference in the lives of Philadelphians every day. And Cody, again, we're going to miss you, but many thanks to all who have contributed. And uh, until we meet again, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you so much. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Um, first and foremost, I want to thank my colleagues, specifically yourself, Council President, Councilmember Jamie Gardiere, Councilman Curtis Jones, Councilman Derek Green, Councilman Cindy Bass, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, Councilman Alan Dom, Councilwoman Helen Gimm, Councilmember Kendra Brooks, Councilman Bobby Heenan, Councilmember Sherrell Parker, and Councilman Isaiah Thomas for supporting my resolution Bill, my Resolution Number Two One Zero One Four Four, calling on Congress to pass House Resolution Forty, uh, which will establish a commission to study reparations and also look at recommendations for providing re- reparations to the African-American community. Uh, in this day and age, when we talk about institutional racism, uh, we talk about issues of social justice, uh, we have literally, particularly as African-American people, have built this country from sixteen nineteen to this current present day and time. And so I want to thank the National Coalition for Blacks for reparations and Cobra on supporting this effort. Uh, and also, our President of the United States, President Biden, also supports on the creation of this commission. When we look at the health disparities that we are facing today, the housing disparities that we are facing today, the economic development disparities that we are facing today, the e- educational disparities that we are facing today, all goes back to how this country was set up and this country was built. And when you talk about not only slavery, but Jim Crow, um, to the current issues that we're fighting today around criminal justice reform and why my colleague, um, Councilman Derek Green wants to look at how institutional racism impacts um, our society and how we look at um, the issues around gun violence, it all comes down to us addressing the issues of how do we right the wrongs of how this country has been built. Particularly, I've been having a significant impact on how we have moved forward in this country as African-American people. And so I just want to thank all my colleagues for their co-sponsorship um, of the resolution. And just want to take a moment and personally say thank you. Well, another resolution I introduce is around um, the National Football League. And that's way out of our purview. Um, I'm not really actually all-around sports guy other than supporting our Philadelphia Eagles, Eagles and the sport teams in my district. But again, we talk about institutional racism, and every day we begin to commercialize what it is to be black. And I saw how the NFL committed um, two hundred and fifty million dollars to address the issue of institutional systematic racism, but yet um, you have a policy in place called racial norming for individuals who are impacted through concussions and playing sports, which to me just goes toward, um, you're putting your dollars up, saying that you're standing up and speaking out regarding an issue, but yet you have policies in place that are discriminatory. And so I thank my colleagues for passing that resolution, but I wanted to go on the record on on those two particular resolutions as relates to um, how we address systematic and institutional um, racism. Because in some instances, I think it becomes a cliche um, to in this day and age right now. Everybody, all of a sudden now, is fighting for social justice. Everybody um, has a specific concern around um, African-Americans, which I believe is great in terms of our day and times, but I also want to make sure that there's some substance around on the very issues that we are fighting for, because these these issues are impacting um, our very um, country, but most importantly, African-Americans and people of 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 alike in our city. So I just want to state that for the record, um, and thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you so much. Um, looks like that concludes our speeches for today. We have the minority and majority, and with that, uh, I'd like to recognize Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March fourth, twenty twenty-one at ten AM.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved to second to council stand adjourned until Thursday, March fourth, twenty twenty-one, ten AM. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much. Uh, thank you again for another good session.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Nice job. Speak it out.
There you go. Amen. There you go. Amen.